I call order. Our record meeting weekend board commissioners Monday, November 11th, 2019, at 5:12 PM. We will waive the roll call vote, the dedication and presidency due to the fact that we did have it out in work session. And we'll just move right on into our agenda. Commissioners, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make the motion to approve the minutes. Second.
That motion in the second.
Excuse me. Prove the agenda.
Excuse me. Prove the agenda. Motion in the second. All right, begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Carter. Aye. Commissioner Barker.
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Poe.
Aye.
The chair votes out. All right, we'll get right into the consent items approval of the minutes, 80 minutes of October 2019, the work session of October 14th, 2019, the record meeting of October 14th, 2019, and a work session of October 28th, 2019, and a call meeting of October 28th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We accept it, Mr. Brandon.
Okay, do I have a second?
Third.
Got a motion in the second. Any questions about any of the amendments, any corrections or anything commissioners that you may have seen? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Poe.
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Barker.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
And the chair votes out. All right, items, Mr. Manager, we'll start with item A.
Okay. Under tab A is request to reappoint Ms. Candace Rice to the Wake Forest County Development Authority.
Okay, do I have a motion, Commissioners?
Chairman, I move the reappointment as presented.
Okay, got a second? Got a second? Any questions? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, again with Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Barker.
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Poe.
Aye.
The chair votes out. Item B, Mr. Manager.
Okay, under tab B is approval of a quick lane deed for the property of Wake County to the Wake Forest County Development Authority.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Accept the quick lane deed and opinions out of from the Wake Forest County Development Authority.
Okay, second.
Sir.
Got a motion in the second. Any questions for the manager? Commissioners?
Other questions? Does the county attorney approve this document?
Yes, sir, they actually drew it up.
No, just clarify, yeah, I didn't, our office did not draw it up. The WWBA's attorney, Ms. Strickfella, did draw it up. I do want you all to be familiar with which property it is, but it's my understanding that this is simply kind of an administrative cleanup of property that everyone believed already would be owned by WWBA, that just when they did the title work on it, it popped up, that they needed to clean up instead of, that there was some indication that the county may have a right to it still.
Okay. Any further questions? Commissioners, here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Barker.
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Poe.
Aye.
The chair votes out. Item C, Mr. Manager.
Under tab C is request to purchase a truck from Homeland Security grant for the CSX team.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, I've got a motion.
Got a second?
I've got a motion in the second. Any questions? Further questions to the manager?
I'd like Mr. Johnson to let the manager to explain what we're doing just for the viewing audience. Okay, this is a truck that we're purchasing from Homeland Security in the amount of forty-one thousand, I'll get my price here in a minute, forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and this is to be used for Wake County and by Wake County for various issues where we have to use it for search and rescue team.
Hundred percent grant.
Hundred percent grants, no county money whatsoever.
Okay, any further questions? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, again with Commissioner Poe.
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Barker.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
The chair votes out. Item D.
Okay, under tab D is award of contract to Georgia Asphalt Producers in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cent for the intersection safety improvement at US One and Wake On The Drive to be funded out of the 2014 SPOS and a two hundred thousand dollar L-Ming grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation.
Okay, Mr. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in the second.
What's the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
What's the motion?
Basically, we're through the bid from Georgia Asphalt Producer. Any further questions?
Open the comments, Mr. Chairman. I know we had some discussion in the work session about the additional calls or the costs in the actual proposal for the water sewer. Can you talk about that, Mr. Manager? Yes, sir. The total contract was for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, well, three to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Seventy-six thousand dollars of that amount is water relocation work, and then, yeah, and that's it. Yeah, I just want to mention something about CSX permit, but that's approved water work.
It is included in the bid process.
That is correct, yes, sir.
It's all way quick. It's all a repeat job.
It's all included, but there's still, you know, monies that the county gonna pay. So, I know we had a discussion about one time whether, you know, before we did Cypress, whether it's gonna be the water sewer project, it's gonna pay for project. Are we, are we saying now that on projects like this that we're gonna pay and we're not gonna, I mean, we just gonna start paying for water sewer improvements on roads like this? I'm just trying to clarify, make sure now. Or is it just?
I think it's a little more than one file.
Kind of, it's just the second one, so are we, so are we starting with precedence to where it's gonna be harder later on after we do five, six, seven of them, and then we gonna come back and say, no, the water sewer, you need to pay for those ones? That's my question.
Well, can we amend the motion, which I would agree, to look at, to, you know, I don't want to delay the project, but I want, I want us to take a strong look at what we're doing with the water sewer and this seven, six thousand dollars and making sure that maybe it's something that they should be doing. You know, I'm just trying to, it's all like nipples and dimes now.
I know seven, six dollars may sound like a lot, but it is.
Well, I think, I don't know anything about, the only thing I know about this is cast iron, this big stuff, about ten inch, and it was put there in, I believe, early seventies.
The Chervon Way.
And the water authority has bought gear to deal with that.
But even though.
And the other, the other project is, we're, we're furnishing the pipe and they're furnishing all the manpower and equipment, which is over about fifty percent of the cost.
And I can, I can understand what you're saying with, when you said the water, the water sewer, until it's not, don't have the equipment or whatever that can do this, we don't need them, but they may have the means to pay this.
I'm sure they don't have, they don't have the resources to pay that out yet.
But Chairman, when the water park was set up, they have an understanding with the county commission at that time that they would move these lines when needed. They've already agreed to do it, and I'm, I'm, I am against paying for this because they, they can do it. And I would make an amendment to if Mr., if Commissioner Barker accepted, amendment to his motion to deduct seventy-six thousand dollars from the project and let them pay that and we'll pay the balance if they were accepted, if not, then I vote against it.
Well, I don't think we can do that unless their board votes to do it, just like this board has voted to do this. I don't think we need, we need them seventy-six thousand dollars out of that, that'll take, you folks gotta pay this, but I hear board.
I know, but that's, I mean, it's thrown on the table list without that back of it, so, but I, I mean, I'm not a favorite, I'll vote against it unless Commissioner Barker accepts my vote.
So that's when we play the project, so they have their meeting, and somebody, the manager, I guess, will be wanting to be there to explain it.
When are we looking at starting this one? Have they already checked the bonds, do you know, Brandon?
They won't do any of that until they give noticeable word from us, letting them know they can go forward with their bonding companies to execute their contract, their bid bond, their performance payment bond, and ask when that process was.
Probably about thirteen days.
We got a deadline with state speed as much as.
As long as we're in a contract with, with, with the contractor by the end of the year. We have to have an executed contract by then.
I think we need this whole settlement project till somebody goes and talks to the board.
I think we waited a little.
Authority board.
I think we waited a little late to do this, really, because we just.
Force, force it up.
I'm gonna draw my base. No, no.
One sec, one sec. I mean, I, I didn't want to hear your motion, but then I want to hear Commissioner Carter saying.
Well, I, I think we've waited a little late to bring it up now. I mean, we do this, we're gonna build this road.
Well, I mean, but I didn't know about the seven, six thousand though.
Well, I didn't know how much it was gonna cost.
How long have y'all known that that water lappes in the way? A week, two weeks, a month?
Probably two months. We fast-tracked this whole thing to try to go quick and get it done by the end of the year.
So, the water authority ain't gonna get justice out of this, probably say, y'all, y'all gonna pay. They, they haven't had a chance to even hear it. If it's been that long, they should've been handled by, they should've been brought before the water authority.
But we didn't know it.
But we did.
I thought, I thought we were going to, after this Cypress Street deal, when these projects came up and there were lines, and we knew the lines were there, to immediately inform the water department so they could start making plans. That needs to be done, but to come here at the last minute and not, just here at the last minute make a decision, it to me is gonna cost a lot of money. It should've, like Chairman said, oh, this should've been worked out, but.
Water authority should've been made aware, it's too much.
Yeah.
I'm gonna draw my base to give us, say, a week, the water department said they might have a lot of delays.
Their meetings mentioned to.
Somebody here's gonna make a motion.
So, so I use, I used to have, in other words, you wanna take?
That's what we need to do.
If your motion is to table this, I will, second, second, everybody has to have a little quick call me, you know, if you have to, that's fine. Since we're not gonna have a meeting.
I mean, I'm all for getting the intersection redone, redid, but seventy-five thousand dollars all of a sudden, I think, they give us time to meet the water department, see if they'll be able to pay supplies or whatever, time to get on Cypress Street.
Well, I think Cypress Street project was, the project pays for material, and I don't know, have you talked to the director down there about Cypress Street?
No, sir.
Okay, they, the list that you gave them, they've, they, they've taken that list, I understand, and can save, save us a lot of money, you know, 'cause they won't buy nothing that they don't need. You know, maybe, I don't, you make up a list?
No, sir.
Oh, you didn't, okay. But I, I do know that, that there'll be a bunch, a good bit of money saved on that Cypress Street project that they seen, where they was working, working it up, they made a start on Cypress Street. I know that, but this is, this is a whole brand new ballgame, right?
And I agree with that.
I don't think we did spring this on them unless they hear.
Well, and that's, and that's why I agree with the table, because I don't want us to get into a position over the past thirty days, we, you know, we kinda like pretty much the way you got changed the rules on Cypress and we doing it on this one, and then the next month probably something else. All of a sudden, what, I mean, I mean, we gonna be doing it all?
I'm estimating where the agreement for Cypress was, buggered on, I was on vacation in the Grinch Hill, but agreement specifically said that this was a one-time project and was not to set precedent for the future. So, they, the agreement with them when it was set up was that they would do all this movement of plans, and that's, that's what's, that's my thing. And my car is just bouncing around, it's, it's impossible.
Well, that's where, that's where this board and the water authority board is.
But they, but I'm full agreement, when these projects come up and they gotta move lines, they'll know right then.
That's right. I feel they have one.
Right, that's, that's on the fair.
I can't tell you about their, you know, their reserves, how much money they got reserved, let's say five thousand dollars, I don't know, they, they run pretty tight here, what I see. I see water bills.
If they have a maintenance fund or a fund that they work off of, and they can raise rates, I mean, that's how they make money.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, they raise, they raise our rates, that's your, and they have to to pay those people. They won't, won't pay them.
Is this on the table on the, can we?
Oh, that's the one.
Get manager, manager, and then.
Now, attorney.
We need to do it, we need to, what is the.
Let's, let's first, just for the minutes, make sure that we're all in agreement to table it. I think I understood that Commissioner Barker made a motion and Commissioner Nelson seconded that to table it, so if we're all, take a vote, and we're all in agreement on that, and then you all give direction to staff on what you'd like them to do before next Tuesday's water meeting.
Their meeting's at one fifteen next Tuesday.
So we need to make a, all right, we need to vote on the table.
We've already.
We made a motion, all right.
Second, all right. Any more questions? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, Commissioner Carter.
No.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Mepson?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Aye.
And I'm gonna vote, yeah, wherever that leaves us.
And so now we need to give direction to manager, I think, I think, the manager or engineer need to meet with the water sewer authority.
They can be down there.
I guess he has more than suggestions.
Probably wanna talk to him in the dance.
Yeah.
All right, everybody's minds clear on that item. Let's go to item B, Mr. Manager.
Okay, under tab E is to approve a right-of-way entry permit for CSX for the construction of the intersection of project of US One and Wake On The Drive. Amount of permit is twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Mr. Chairman, make a motion if we approve the permit to be for CSX for right-of-way for the Wake On Drive progress.
Got a motion in the second. Any further questions about this item? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Poe.
Aye.
Commissioner Tab. Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
And the chair votes out. Item F, Mr. Manager.
Okay, under tab F is to approve a revised preliminary engineering agreement with CSX for the ABC Avenue extension for the area there where the bridge crosses Kelp Creek.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Chairman, I move approve the revised preliminary engineering agreement with CSX as proposed.
Got a motion in the second. Any questions for the manager, Commissioners? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Poe?
Aye.
And the chair votes out.
Okay, under tab G is to approve a proposal from Middle Georgia Signs from the single county T-SPOS fund for traffic sign and safety improvements, phase one of the project, which is sixty-four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-five cent. And they were the only there.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Here, Commissioner Nelson first. Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, could we ask Mr. Manager to explain the plan for these signs?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I'm gonna call on Mr. Michael Brooks to go through that. He's the one who put the proposal together, he probably has more detail than I do, much more detail.
This plan includes everything from railroad tracks on Albion Avenue, where the city starts, all the way out to Kenning, back around, all the way to Pine Avenue, Kentucky Route Eight, area of that area. This is phase one, second phase, we pick up from there, you know, the county streets, and bring it all the way back around to where we join back to the Emerson Park.
Okay, that'd be all the way to Kenning line?
Yes.
In that.
Gilbert Park, all the way back around. Yes, that brings us to eighty-four, going to Blackshear on this face, from Albion to Carville, all the way back around, and then we'll catch the second phase over there, we'll still need to catch the James Town area, but this is, we'll get the majority of the dough in that area. And that includes all new sign posts, new sign brackets, new stop signs, speeding signs, street signs, any sign that's related, it needs to be changed out, re-retain all of the old material, we can recycle the good stop signs that's been put up and all that kind of stuff, where I would use it back in the kennels. But, we put it out for the end, this is the project.
Do we have a timeframe?
Brandon, you know when the start date was?
He said he could probably get started pretty quickly after being identified he was gonna be awarded.
I mean, y'all have, y'all have to set up time, you know, we give them a pre-name list and all of that, so it'll be set up, EMTCD standard.
I think he said he could do it within just a couple of weeks.
All deal, peace back.
Yes, sir.
So what, they got mobile unit that comes to sign on?
They'll make them in-house, they'll make them, they've got, it's a big company, they, this is a sideline that they do.
But lots of these street signs, they need to be replaced, I mean.
Some of them lose, some of them don't, a lot of them don't need reflectivity requirements. The new signs are now nine old lanes, so they have for vision impaired people, it's easier for them to see at night and that kind of stuff. That's where the letters are bigger, if y'all noticed that, but a lot of signs now have gone bigger. You can leave the old ones up as long as they're still neat, you know, you don't get tore down, but once they get tore down, it's supposed to make the nine old lanes.
So the street signs are very reflective, so you can.
Yes, sir. Well, it looks good. You shine a light on them, they don't need reflectivity and the reflectivity standards that. Just bring your thing up and stand. New breakaway poles and that kind of stuff.
That's good. Any more questions? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Poe?
Aye.
The chair votes out. Item H, Mr. Manager.
Okay, under tab H is a request to approve three change orders for the Wake Home Land area paving project with Littleville Construction in the amount of, make it a total amount two million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents.
What was the amount of the change order?
Twenty, that's what I was going through, is add them up. Brandon, do you know where all the top of your head is total?
No, they're included in the package, they're all three of them that are in there. The final one, you subtract the total of all three and the original contract amount and you get the total. Yeah, this is three.
Take that.
New contract cost, two million, one sixty-six, subtract the original one.
Two hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and three dollars and eighty-four cents.
That's the total of all three.
Of all three. Two, two, three, three oh three, point eight four.
I make a motion.
Okay, motion, got a motion in the second. Any further questions? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Poe.
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
The chair votes out. Item I.
Under tab I is the approval of the 2020 budget for the indigent defense agreement, making the total budget amount eight hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents. This is actually a decrease because of population loss in the six county area.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion with.
Without a second.
Third.
Got a motion in the second. Now, Wake County is part of this eight hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, it's how much, Mr. Manager?
Thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So they're probably, we ain't.
Yeah, we're paying a portion of it, correct?
Yes, sir. Any further questions? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Poe?
Aye.
The chair votes out. Item J.
Okay, under tab J is request to purchase a 2018 Chevrolet fifteen passenger van to be used by various departments when needed, it would be paid for, excuse me, out of the 2014 SPOS in the amount of twenty-five thousand.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move approval of the request to purchase the 2018 Chevrolet passenger van for the amount, Mr. Manager, give us.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any further questions? This looks like a, is this a half ton or a three-quarter ton? Looks like real heavy duty.
I want to say it's a half ton.
About two fifty, it's a one fifty. This looks, picture makes it look like.
Was it? Fifteen, so Chevrolet's.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred Chevrolet.
It's half ton.
It's half ton.
Sometimes pictures will exceed.
Yeah.
Okay, I got a motion in the second. Any further questions? Here you go. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Poe.
Aye.
Commissioner Mepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Barker?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
And the chair votes out. Okay, number nine, that concludes all of our, our motions for different venues. County manager?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, to mention, only thing I wanna do is just make sure that we recognize and honor our veterans today.
Oh, yes.
I think it's very important, and on Veterans Day, I always remember my father, who was in World War II, and so every day I get, think about Veterans Day, I get kinda emotional thinking about him. He'd be a hundred years old right now if he was still alive.
Yeah.
So, I know if it wasn't for World War II veteran, we'd all be speaking German right now.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Manager, I, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like for us, I'd like for us to rise in the home of silence to our veterans.
Yes, sir. Let's all rise for a home of silence in honor of our veterans. Communications Communications Agency, have you. Systems Communications Agent, have any of those?
That's what we got.
Okay. Messengers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, same subject that Mr. Moy just brought up. I would, I would like to thank the Williams High Settlement School, they, they had a lunch for veterans who had children or grandchildren at Williams High School. They went, they were, really went out, um, and the children for the past week, my grand, I got two granddaughters there now. And they spent a whole week studying, um, why there are veterans, why this is a country, history. They've done an excellent job. They had a wall of honor, um, anybody at Williams High School who had a veteran in the family, pictures of, um, principals, especially Smallwood, the teachers and the staff and the children did an excellent job. I was proud of them, and y'all would be proud of them.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna piggyback on what, what we said previously, um, um, I swooped, um, all the veterans that I could do in the military, and, uh, and I think that's a service. Um, the city, the city police and the, uh, fire department did something really special today. They, uh, they surprised Mr. C.C. Stevens, uh, who's been, um, balanced illnesses. He's a hundred and seven years old. Um, in September, this past September, he, he celebrated his hundred and seventh birthday, and he's one of the oldest, um, um, living, surviving, I guess, um, uh, World War Two veterans out there. I think there's like five in the, in the country that's over a hundred and five, he's one of them. And so they surprised, you know, they went, they went to the house and, and surprised him, and, and he really enjoyed that, and, uh, and that was, that was a really, really, uh, special thing for him. Um, and, uh, he's in good spirits. You know, he said, uh, you know, he reached school, he was up driving and going to bacon, and, and he really was. You know, and all of a sudden, you know, uh, he's calling with him a few, you know, needs and this and that, and, and he's been going through a few, uh, problems at, uh, he's home now, and, and he's in good spirits, uh, still, mind is sharp as ever. I had been outside this morning to, uh, especially to tell him, to say, um, happy Veterans Day, Mr. Stevens, that, um, we miss him at church. Uh, on a second note, I know we all received a letter from the manager, um, I think, uh, former, uh, police chief, uh, Tony Tanner sent a letter out about, Bob Sasser, uh, Boulevard Road, or we named it Hatch Point Road, and I think that's something that we need to look at doing. Um, hopefully when the road is completed, you know, before then, we can give the D O T, as they start, you know, go signage, and go ahead and, and, and dedicate that road in honor of, uh, Bob Sasser with his Parkway or Road or Boulevard, whatever. 'Cause I think he is, he has been very instrumental, um, in, uh, developing that area. That's what it's all about. You know, somebody told me, said, well, he's making money. Well, you know what, that's, that's what this is about, you know? We, we need people like that, that's willing to invest and, and develop property and make money, you know, and, uh, and so I want us to really, I don't want us to wait till the last minute to do that, but it'd be nice to do it as that road is completed, to, to, to have a rip and cut, and have to rename it all, if you could do it at one time, and go ahead and, and see what, uh, see what we can do to get that moving. That's all I have. And Hatch Point Road, we naming that above after Bob Sasser, uh. Other than that, we have Thanksgiving coming up, and we sure wanna have a Thanksgiving, and I know we're not gonna have a meeting later this month, but this is our last meeting for, um, this month. And, um, just have a safe, um, and happy Thanksgiving.
Well, just to let's sweet all better thank for the service, um, did we have a feedback on meeting, did y'all have a labor turn?
Yes, sir, and staff met with the contractor, uh, that damaged the road. They're supposed to get back with us and come back with, uh, a compromise on the proposal that we extended to them, and should let us know something in the next few days.
Carter. Yeah, I too would like to voice it. Same thing about our veterans. You know, when you give a man a, a uniform and a, or a woman a, a, a uniform and a gun, and he goes out and is facing fire, he's doing a lot for you. You can never repay, just like our police. You know, a policeman, he don't never know if he's coming back to the house or not, when he leaves. And, uh, I think these people ought to be not only thanked every time, but, uh, given a lot of respect. Because they, they actually do put their life on the line every day, and, uh, I think they were, they're to be rewarded for it. Another item I got is, uh, our meeting hours, I'm still gonna, I'm gonna probably beat that or to death, but I've got so many people that's been asking me to meet, to meet after hours when people get off of work. And, uh, I too would like to see that, if it would help our people more. You know, we, these meetings are not for us, and they, the, the people don't work for us, we work for the people, and we should be at the convenience of the people. And, uh, I, I really think that, uh, gentlemen, we, we might be missing a, a chance here to show our people that we really do care, and that we will want to meet after hours, so that they too can attend these meetings. Uh, and I'm just, uh, I'm afraid that, uh, we probably don't show enough, uh, caring. I, I, I'm forgetful about that. I mean, I'm just after to getting the job done, but we do need to show some compassion sometime when we do our jobs. And, uh, to let these folks know that we, we won't make it convenient for them. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm just gonna echo what's been already said, uh, you know, we would not always be here tonight if it wasn't for our military. We'd probably be under the hammer and sickle, for the likely, and my, my honor is to our, our military present the past. And I've told so many people, we got graveyards all over the world full of American soldiers that gave their lives and paid the ultimate sacrifice, that we could be here tonight. They're the reason we here. We need to honor them. We need to honor their families. They important. So I'll get a little motion. Our police officers, our firefighters, all over the United States of America, they there to, they're there doing their jobs. And a lot of times they get slapped or overlooked, and I don't like what's going on in America with our, with our law enforcement, and all of our public safety is being abused. Whenever you see people getting, police officers getting water poured on them, slapped, kicked, that, that's, that's just unreal to see that in America today, people. And we need to pray for our, for our leaders, our national leaders, our state leaders, our local leaders. We need, we need God's help. And through the people, that can happen, and we need your help, we need your help, very bad. Now, we pray for strength, we ask you to pray for us as leaders of this community. And as our president said, God bless America. If we don't, if we don't bless this country, who will? And I appreciate all of you coming tonight. We won't have a meeting. We done this some years, six or eight years ago. We don't have but one meeting in November and December. We have two. Reason for it is, it's a work session, is the, the point, uh, it's in, it's in, uh, the, uh, holiday week, Thanksgiving and Christmas. And so we, we chose to do that, it's helped, it's helped our employees, helped a lot of things. And, uh, I appreciate what the people in our community did. Yes, we all disappointed about the Splus, we sure are. Cause his word wasn't, wasn't told right, it was, it was inaccurate, very inaccurate, and nobody. Me as chairman of this commission, I had three people call me and want to know, and everyone of them didn't understand, they didn't know, well, this is opinion number ten. This is opinion we've had for twenty years. The one is to bag all of the pennies. And so, you know, we just gonna have to put our heads together with our manager and his team, and figure out how we can make things work. And I can tell you, there's gonna be some shores. I don't know how we'll overcome some of it, some of it won't be able to overcome. It, you never know what a penny, just one little penny, and forty-five percent of it is generated from outside this county. People just didn't understand, or didn't wanna, I don't know, I don't know, but just pray for the people, if it ever comes back up again, that they'll understand and, and love it right. But anyhow, I'll finish with that. Uh, I would retain a motion to, the chairman, uh, so, yeah, I got a motion, I have a second.
Sorry.
All in favor of I saying that?
Aye.